We're now ready for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President, I've moved that board approve the agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Mr. Williams had to leave and I don't know what happened to Dr. McCarthy. So, we're ready to vote? I'm gonna have to vote because my computer's lit off. I vote aye.
I didn't vote because it didn't come up. That's interesting because I didn't do anything. Patrick did it for me. You said something to it. Okay, this is as long as this in there. Thank you.
Alright, therefore, we're ready for school highlights. Dr. Anderson?
Oh, this is one of our favorite part of the agendas. And so we have several awards that are being given out tonight. We're gonna start off with a little performance for everyone because we know our young people have been waiting for some time. As you may know, it is Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month. So, we'll start off with calling up the school and they'll read the proclamation. And we have several young scholars with us this evening. Our wonderful principal, Dr. Pilar Mejia, can you come forward please? It's like you're walking a runway. And then you can do introductions and I need to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, ladies and gentlemen. Well, let's see. I would like to introduce our phenomenal music teachers, Mrs. Reyes and Mr. Camacho. Mrs. Reyes, would you do the honors, please, to read the proclamation? Mr. Camacho, come in and wave. Our kids are so good, they don't need them to be hovering over them. True story. Alright, whereas each year, September 15th through October 15th, is set aside to commemorate the contributions made by Hispanics throughout our nation's history. And whereas it is a month to reflect not only on the past but also on the future role of Hispanics in the United States.
Now that we've done the proclamation, which will go back to Scott. We're gonna turn it back over to Dr. Mejia.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Reyes, Mr. Camacho. Alright, so I want to introduce to you a phenomenal group of students from our school who will be performing a short but heartfelt song for you in celebration of this month of National Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. As you see, some have ukuleles, which is an instrument that they started playing. When, Mr. Camacho?
Probably in first grade.
Okay, so our students have great opportunities in music and amazing teachers. Saludos de Scott, escuela en dos idiomas. Es un honor para nosotros estar aquí esta noche para celebrar el mes de la herencia hispanica. Esperamos que disfruten de nuestra presentación. Greetings from Scott, dual-language magnet. It is an honor to be here tonight to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. We hope you enjoy our performance.
Lucia, take the latex. And wait just a minute. We have a certificate. Don't you love teachers? She's already running in the bag. So, we present this and recognize Scott Dual Language Magnet for Hispanic Heritage Month and for your performance at the board meeting. We thank you both. We know through good leaders and coaching, we have great scholars. Thank you both and students, you were phenomenal.
Mr. Woods, we'd like to ask.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So, I know that we have a lot of students. I don't wanna belabor it too much by asking them all to introduce themselves. I guess if their teachers could tell us a little bit about them and their class they're taking. And the one thing I'll do, I'll take liberties to say that I do believe we have the best music teachers throughout the entire state and our district. I especially love the two that are standing in front of you because they have taught both of my children. So, I'm a little bit biased, but that's all true.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Yes, we have the best of the best here. We have some of our select fifth graders that have shown that they can play and sing with the finest. So, we let these children audition this in the last couple of weeks and wanted to do this song with us for you. They are fifth graders. They have been performing on instruments since about first grade with the ukuleles. We learn piano, we learn little drums. Lots of instruments going on at Scott Dual Language.
You have a guitar lab too, right?
We do have a guitar lab. Yes, and chimes and resonator bells. And lots of energy. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Board members, can we take the picture? This way we can free up young people so they can leave after this. If I hadn't come forward a little bit, can our board members just fill in in the back and do the picture now instead of waiting to after three more groups? That's one crowd room there.
Okay, if you're students in the back, get closer to my gap between a friend and the front row. Is that where you're going? Okay, ready, one, two, three.
Thank you. It is our Scott Dual Language Scholars and Educators. Apart, we are on to our next award. The Attendance Award. It is a highly coveted award. It's a very heavy trophy. Several years ago, we began sending that award trophy around and the person with the highest attendance wins it. And it has stayed at McCarter or Scott for quite some time. So, this is our drum roll. Do we have the attendance number? Do we know around what the attendance rate was? Oh, someone does know. Ninety-seven percent for August. Alright, so here's the drum roll. And the winner is Winston Elementary. Can we have Winston students and staff come forward? This is very heavy. We did our pledge, right? Okay. And so first of all, congratulations. You have, Miss Kirk will take a picture. After this, we'll get one with the board. But would you like to make any comments regarding your attendance? We'll turn it over to our administrator to introduce herself again and then any comments that you'd like to make.
Hello, my name is Ms. Artzer. I'm the Assistant Principal at Winston Elementary. Mrs. Pierce was unable to be here tonight but she was so incredibly proud of Winston that in fact during a meeting that this young man was a part of, she saw that we won it and squealed it with excitement. And so that is why Mr. Isaiah is here because he was the first student to hear the wonderful news. We are just very honored to receive this award and very proud of our Winston warriors. And thank you guys for coming to school. You make Winston a wonderful place. I also wanna just say thank you to this wonderful attendance team. They are the ones who help ensure that our students are at school each and every day. They work so incredibly hard, so thank you for all of your efforts.
Can they introduce who they are?
Absolutely.
I'm Diana Camario. I'm the office parrot at Winston. I make the phone calls.
I'm Mona Ridley. I'm one of the counselors at Winston. And I'm Mallory Jacobs. I'm another one of the counselors at Winston.
Sophia Perkins, I am the School Secretary.
And can we go to our student over here? We would like to know who you are. And the board might have a question for you. That's a beautiful picture.
My name is Sophia Prue. Second.
My name is Israel. I'm first grade. Getting going.
My name is Cadence and I'm in preschool.
I'm Kamaya and I'm in third grade.
I'm Isaiah and I'm fifth grade.
And we just wanna say thank you to the parents for bringing these students tonight. We really appreciate you getting them here.
Open this up for any questions for a board member, for any one of our students.
Questions, Ms. Kirk?
Well, you represent different grades, even preschool. Why do you come to school every day? What gets you to come to school every day?
I like math because I get to learn.
You like math?
I like recess.
You're right. Most everybody likes recess.
I like learning. I like PE.
There we go.
I like music.
Well, thank you for showing it.
I like band.
Yeah, you said, you mentioned just about everything that happens someplace in the school each day, whether it's music or PE or recess or math. It's wonderful. That means your whole school is doing a great job with you. So, thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
And we, I'm hanging around for a few, in two minutes, we'll call you right back up for a photo with the board. So, we just asked you to hang tight for two minutes, parents, and thank you for bringing them. And our final award, we are so excited. My goodness, I just love this video. I'll ask Mr. Dick to please come forward. And in honor of this student and Mr. Dick, we were all wearing purple. Even Scott was wearing purple. Alright, we're gonna turn it over. The video will start first and then Mr. Dick may say a few words and introduce his senior.
My name is Caitlin Shima. I am a senior at Tepica West.
She's really highly involved in school. She participates in the arts and athletics. She's also one of our mentors, helping students new to campus as freshmen every year. And so when we thought about somebody who's really involved and does a lot of stuff to help Topeka West and contribute to Topeka West, but also has high academic standards, Katie stood out from the group.
The most important club or activity that I've been a part of has definitely been volleyball. I've gotten to know some really good people and teammates that I've gotten to play with. And it's just been really helpful for me because I possibly would like to play volleyball in college.
Katie just brings that energy to the court. She leads from the front row to the back row, brings our attention, brings the crowd in. She's that one that the girls can really just turn to when we need that momentum back, when we need that play to happen. She has a goal of what she wants herself, that mark that she leaves on the program, that mark she leaves on the school, the tradition of our program to continue. And she really uses her leadership to build that with the rest of the girls.
Volleyball has helped me become a better person through leadership and following, setting a good example for others to follow.
This is an individual that I have watched for three years and grow both on and off the court and in and out of the classroom. And I cannot wait to see what the future brings for her.
Some advice that I've gotten through late crew is to go big. And I think that really stuck with me because it means something different for everyone. Going big might be like a small thing for someone else, but like a big thing for anyone. And I just encourage people to go big in whatever they do.
So, it's my pleasure to introduce Katie Sheenley, everybody. Come on up here Katie. In addition to volleyball, and I'm sure Katie will have a little bit to say here in a minute, she's also participated in basketball for four years. She's been part of the softball team for four years. Just an all-around great kid, great family, tremendous supporters of Topeka West, just kind, a leader among everybody else. She's in the orchestra, choir for a little bit. And so just an all-around great student and a great example for everybody at Topeka West as someone to aspire to be. So, we're all very proud of Katie. Oh, we also have a gift.
We're gonna open the gift and I'll hold these things for you. And we'll turn it over to the board. If there's a question you'd like to ask.
Any questions for Ms. Shima? Dr. McCarthy?
Hi Katie, thank you for coming here tonight. We are so proud of you. It's clear that you're just an exemplary role model for all the students at West. I'm a fellow charger, so I'm very happy to have you here tonight as our first student of the month for the year. And we let those Shima kids. Do we have any more coming? I always like asking kids for the award. It's so helpful for us to hear what your experience is like in high school, any favorite classes or teachers, and if there's anything you want to tell us about that you think could be better or that you'd like to change. Now's your time.
I've had a very good experience at Topeka West. The teachers have really pushed me academically. I've had very, very good teachers such as Mr. Schnacker, Ms. Brewer. Ms. Vaughn is very good.
What do they teach? Can you say the subjects?
Mr. Schnacker teaches honors English and nine. Ms. Vaughn teaches honors biology and AP biology. Ms. Brewer teaches honors world history.
Anything else about the school that you'd like to highlight? What has made it such a good fit for you?
I've gotten to be involved in a lot of things that I don't think that I could be involved to add another school in. So, I think that has really helped me grow as a leader and as a person, getting to experience all those activities. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. President. Katie, thank you for coming to speak to us and congratulations. This recognition is very well received. Only having seen you at a distance and at your parents' side for a while, I guess I got to talk to you in capital last year. I've always been very impressed with you. The thing I want to know really is, what are you gonna do now? What do you wanna be when you grow up? What's the big plan for a student as talented as you?
I'm thinking about engineering, but I'm keeping my options pretty open, either at Kansas State or Bethel College in North Newton. If I go to Bethel, I would like to play volleyball there. So, I think that would be a good fit for me.
Do you know what discipline in engineering?
Possibly industrial.
So, it sounds like you probably know what you wanna be. You'd like to learn it and work at what kind of company?
Anywhere that'll take me.
I'm not in an HR role anymore.
Not recruiting?
No. Genuine interest. Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Congratulations, Katie.
Thank you.
Alright, this time we're gonna take a few minutes of break to get a couple of photos. And so our students from Winston and staff, one of Winston's family, and the big heavy trophy for you. Okay, you ready? You look right here. One, two, three. Thank you.
We're doing a good job.
So, we are ready for public communications. There are none. I think before we go to a motion, we need to discuss a little bit 14.2, which is Resolution Number 19-05, authorizing the sale of general obligation refunding bond series 19A. Gary, do you want to, Mr. Jacob?
Good evening. Here this evening to request your consideration for refunding a portion of our 2014A bonds. And it seems like we are just digesting all the construction we've done from $143 million issue. And, you know, we did a little bit of refinancing in 2017 and teed up refinancing in 2018, which was kinda changed by the tax law. But the current bond market is interesting. And I think it's created a window that we should consider that will allow us to refund a big portion of our 2014A series and capture some interest savings over the life of those bonds. So, it would definitely be beneficial to the district as well as its taxpayers. I have our bond consultant with us, Mr. Barnberg, who is a very familiar face for folks that have been in your chair. And Greg, as we knew him, had a life with Piper Jaffray for many, many years, has switched logos with Raymond James, but it's still the same Greg. And I have a lot of respect in his abilities in the geo-obligation financing market. So, I'm gonna turn it over and let Greg discuss this a little bit. And then if you feel positive about what he has to say, I'm gonna ask that you consider an action item on the resolution allowing us to prepare documents for the sale of refunding bonds for our series 2014A when it is best to do so over the next 30, 60, 90 days. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Greg Barnberg. And Gary used the word interesting in the bond market. I would also put in there surprising. You know, it is interesting when you look back to last November and a lot of the leading economists each year give their prediction of where interest rates will be, you know, throughout the year and where they will end 2019. And the clear consensus from the six leading economists was that the 10-year treasury, which was about a 3.25% at the end of 2018, probably would be fairly stable in the year. Predictions were kind of 3.4 to 3.5. So, just a stable gradual increase in interest rates. And as some of you may recall from the newspaper headlines that the Federal Reserve had been raising short-term interest rates. They controlled the 90-day Fed funds rate. And the last Federal Reserve increase was on And the last Federal Reserve increase was on December 17th, I believe, of 2018. And those same economists were predicting that, given some of the economic statistics and world markets, that there might be one or two more interest rate increases. Some said probably done and maybe no more increases, but no one was bold enough to predict that we'd see Federal Reserve or FOMC rate cuts. And so that 10-year treasury went from 3.3% in November to, last week, or about 10 days ago, it hit its lowest point just briefly. It was at 1.44%. And when you think about that, in a year where they were predicting that rates would be fairly stable with gradual increases, the yields were less than half where they were just 10 months ago on that 10-year treasury. And then in a year where people weren't predicting Federal Reserve cutting short-term rates or the Fed funds rate, we had our second rate cut this week. So in July 31st, the Federal Reserve cut rates, short-term rates, by a quarter of a percent. And then again on Wednesday, cut rates again. So it really ended up being a very surprising year and an interesting year. And that decline in interest rates, we watched it throughout the year. And I would say it was a fairly gradual decline for the early part of 2019. Then when we got into July, started to see more meaningful decreases or declining at a faster pace. And then after the Federal Reserve meeting in late July, and then with the introduction of some of the concerns about trade agreement with China and the world economy and actions by some of the other European countries, the rate declined accelerated at a pretty dramatic pace. It went from 2.05 at the end of July down to 1.45. And so we've been sharing with the district updates on bond refinancings throughout that interest rate decline. And when I think back to some of our early estimates, we were showing one or two million in savings. And then I believe we got into July and the estimated savings was about four million and started to be, feel like, okay, this is something maybe to pay closer attention to. And now with that decline that I described occurring in August, the estimated savings is about seven million. And so that is a result of lowering the interest rate on the outstanding bonds. And you think back to 2014, we were very excited about the interest rates we got at that point in time. So they weren't bad interest rates by any means. But the average interest rate on the bonds that we would look at refinancing would be 3.96%. That would drop down to a new interest rate. Our estimate is about 3.05%. So not quite a full percentage point, but pretty close, 91 basis points or 0.91%. And then the refinancing would not extend the repayment schedule, keeping the same payment schedule, final payment in the year 2044. And we're showing uniform savings each year throughout the life of the issue. It's about 324,000 per year for that estimated total of 7,164,000. That's net of all costs. That's the actual savings that the district would realize. And that benefit to the district is in the bond and interest fund. And what that does is it helps you maintain a lower mill levy in the bond and interest fund. And you think back to the calculations we had prepared during the campaign and what you were representing to voters, I think you've been able to come in under that ever since that election. Locking in an additional savings just puts you in a better position to keep that bond and interest fund, you know, below what was represented to the voters and as low as possible. So with the increase in savings throughout the year and given the current level of savings, I think it was the feeling of your administration to bring this opportunity to the board and see if it's something that you might be interested in and moving forward with. So I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions. But I guess one thing I should say before, related to the process, as you may recall from prior bond issues, the first step is to give permission for us and your bond attorney to start pulling together the documents, get the bond issue in a position where we can move forward and lock in the savings if interest rates remain favorable. And that could happen very quickly, or it could be something that we start the process and the interest rates go up and see the savings, you know, cause us to wait and see for a better opportunity. But the action presented to you this evening is what's referred to as the authorizing resolution. It just gives us permission to start, doesn't obligate you to complete the refinancing. And the second step would be the bond resolution where we would actually bring the final savings back to you. And at that point, you could decide if that's acceptable. And if it is, then you would adopt the bond resolution, which would lock in that final savings. So again, I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Barnberg, thank you so much. It's good to see you again. Every time you come, you have good news for us.
Thank you.
We like seeing you. Could you remind me, I think you just mentioned the number, but I missed it. So the 91 basis points of additional savings that could be realized if everything went, you know, as planned and things are where they are, what's the dollar amount?
The dollar amount in savings is 7,164,242 dollars. And it's spread evenly over the years, 2023 through 2044. So it's about 324,000 per year.
A year?
Per year.
So I wonder if we were to tabulate, you know, the cost of employing one of our second-to-nine world's finest teachers, how many we could fit in, you know, 300,000 dollars a year? Sorry, that was shameless, you know. But really, this, I think, points out the fact that we have a golden opportunity in front of us.
Six. Huh? Six to eight teachers.
There you go. Six to eight teachers per year funded with, I'll be honest, we know that we're not going to take bond and interest rate. It's not fungible. You can't sweep it across and use it to hire teachers. But in the grand scheme of things, in terms of financial management, it's a golden opportunity to save the taxpayers money, to do more than what we said we would. We, you know, underpromised and overdelivered, really. And still were able to do these amazing things for our students and our patrons. And I really, just again, as I always say, I think it's all about the wonderful management that we've got, the stewardship that's in charge of managing our day-to-day budget. So that's Mr. Robbins and Mr. Menke. So I guess you're going to be looking for, and you'll get it because this is on consent. So you'll be getting your authorization to bow forward, other than, I guess, thanking Jay Powell for cutting the rates another quarter point. Do you think we'll see another one, since there's so much noise in the political world right now, that interest rates need to be cut again?
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to be as adventurous as some of the other economists to give an interest rate prediction, because I don't think anybody saw this coming this year. And we did actually see even a little bit of an uptick in interest rates over the last seven to 10 days. But it's really amazing that we got to this point this year. It's still a little bit surprising, and it's tough to figure out what will move the bond market either up or down from here. But, you know, there's so many factors that are impacting into Federal Reserve action, trade deals, our economy here in the U.S., but even the foreign economies. And it's quite a bit of volatility in the bond market, but that volatility does create windows for the district. And if we can be poised and ready to move quickly or be patient, make sure we find that window and capture the savings, I think is rather what we need to be doing for you.
Didn't you remember in the finance, 70 leading economists didn't expect this, isn't that?
Yeah, that was, the people who were paid to come up with a prediction were a little bit off this year. So it is amazing, but it really shows you that even the people that follow this very closely sometimes were impacted by things that we just don't see coming. And this really is an opportunity that not only you, but a lot of school districts are looking at benefiting from.
Dr. McCarthy, do you have something?
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your service to us over the years and your good advice. It's so critical for us as board members to get the best deal that we can for taxpayers. There was just an article in the Wall Street Journal, I think, last week about school bonds essentially being flipped by companies who did not pass those savings on to taxpayers. And do you have a comment on that or?
Yeah, and I did see that article.
Yeah.
It is troubling to me because when we sell the bond issue, we want to make sure that they're sold to investors at the lowest possible interest rate. That's really what benefits you the most. And if they're sold to investors that immediately turn around and sell those bonds at a higher price, then it raises the question, well, couldn't the school district have gotten that higher price or the lower interest rate? And that's really the point of that article. And so for me, when I'm helping a school district or a city or county or anyone with a bond issue, I want to make sure that your best interests are served and that we're finding the investors that will buy your bonds and hold your bonds and will buy them at the lowest possible rate. And so I take that all very, I'm not involved on the sales side. I'm involved in putting together the bond issue, but I'm the person that you interact with and I'm the one who brings the results of the bond issue to you. And so obviously very important to me to make sure that we're finding the investors that are not just in it for a quick profit.
Yes.
We'd rather see you get that slightly lower interest rate. So actually, I was happy to see that article come out because I think it's something that the industry needs to look at and make sure that when you're selling bonds and you're in an order period and you're finding investors, that you're finding those investors that truly are the ones that are going to take the lowest rate rather than somebody looking for, buy a bond issue at a favorable price and then turn a quick profit from it.
And it helps us to do our due diligence.
Sure.
So again, we're so thankful to have somebody who's trustworthy, whose advice we can trust that you are acting under the best faith for us.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Johnson.
I would say deal to what they said, but I also would like to thank Mr. Menke and his team and identifying partners that had this kind of diligence and investment in us as a district. And as you said, it was surprising and interesting, but it's always nice when it's surprising and interesting in our favor and in favor of taxpayers. So thank you for being so diligent in those two.
Sure. Thank you.
Any further questions? Can you explain to me and Ms. Johnson in our finance meeting exactly what is going on? So I don't have any questions at this point. Mr. Menke, this is on the consent agenda and not on an action item. So we can pull it out if you think that's better, or we can just vote on it as a consent.
Prior to the meeting, I noticed that and I can't vote on action. So you can easily vote on consent to the pre-agenda in this format.
Okay.
So we can do the consent agenda and then do this as a separate act and ask the board to have this done.
Okay, on my agenda, it is still 14.2.
Yes.
Okay. Well, my agenda didn't get updated on that.
I don't think it's refreshed.
Okay. Okay. In that case, we will, we need a motion to take care of business by consent. And Mr. Woods, you had something you wanted to bring up?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we separate item 9.1, the personnel report. I can use myself, as is my general practice, as my spouse's name.
So is that a motion?
No, I think you probably still need the official motion for the consent.
Mr. Woods, can we do that when there's only, oh, there's still be four. Sorry.
No, we haven't. We don't have a motion for the consent.
We don't have a motion for it.
Okay, yeah. So you, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented with the exception of item number 9.1, personnel report to be voted on separately. And I've authorized the board president or superintendent to sign a special project and personnel contract form on behalf of the board.
Motion to second, any discussion? Okay, ready to vote? So may I have a motion for 9.1?
Mr. President, I have moved the board approve item number 9.1 from the consent calendar under personnel report.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor? All opposed? You can come back, Dr. Woods, or Mr. Woods. It should be a doctor. So we are now ready for a superintendent's report.
All right, the first item is, tomorrow is the official count day. So the first item is talking about enrollment and the first day of school activities that have occurred. Now, previously, earlier in the year, you heard from one of our new administrators from secondary, Mr. Ackerman. And now we'll be hearing from one of our new administrators from elementary. As Dr. Sawyer comes to the microphone, he'll introduce who is with him. As we prepare for our count day, this is our opportunity to hear how school has started off as we've gotten the students to attend. And I must say, they have, did 100% of your students return their free lunch applications? 100%. And how many students do you have, sir?
We have right around 460.
It's been really impressive just to see the start. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sawyer. I always think it's nice to see new principals, to see they're still alive and smiling and all of that after the first, you know, 30, 60 days of school. So, Dr. Sawyer, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, Dr. Anderson, board. Thank you so much for having me. It is my first year at State Street, and we are having a blast within the first several weeks. We have really been able to energize the school, the students and the family. I could talk on and on about it, but I did bring one of my employees, my counselor, Ms. Ryanberg, who is amazing, who's going to speak a little bit to some of the changes that have happened that have been positive. And then I'll kind of finish it out with some of our things that's going on for tomorrow.
Hi, Mrs. Ryanberg. I've been at State Street for five years, so I really enjoy the school. I've always loved it. It's like home to me. This year has been really great, though. We've made a lot of positive changes. One of the things that I personally really enjoy is Dr. Sawyer takes a lot of our staff feedback, and he makes a lot of changes based on what we say. So one of the things that I'd always been really rooting for was general education intervention meetings during the school day, and he was able to make that happen. He had to do a lot of nagging, you know, trying to figure out how to make it all work, but he did it. We also have a mental health team that's really great. But however, as you can see of the school that has about 460 students, there can be some burnout. So he came up with a system for us to be able to have a social worker, counselor, and administrator on a team. And we have two teams that respond to crisis calls in the building. And that has alleviated some of that burnout because in the past, it used to be whoever was the first responder would be the one that would be responding to the calls. And that can get kind of tiring after a while. He's done a lot of great things for our students, putting in place success plans. So if there's a student that is suspended, we have the families come in with the administrator and the teacher and the student, and they all sit down and they come up with a plan for what would help them in the future so that they can be successful. And it's really nice to have all the stakeholders involved, so everybody's on the same page. And they can hear from the student and from the teacher and administrator and parent what they think is best. So those are just some of the things that have been great. I just know that the school morale is really positive this year. It's really great to be at State Street. Love that place. But I'm so happy that you guys hired him because he's making some great changes.
We don't have ukuleles, but we have compliments, right? I love it. So we really have been energizing and really, you know, we come to school, we get paid. That's one of the perks. But we love our children. We want them to feel like they're getting paid in a way, so we're not passing out dollar bills. But we... But we really are finding opportunities for them to love coming to school. State Street has had a history of going to Ron Clark Academy and really building this house system where, kind of like Harry Potter, where students fall into different houses. And we have some friendly competition that we're starting to build. And so that's one of the ways that we were able to get all of our lunch applications in because of team competition. We are having our first big assembly tomorrow where we're separating in our houses. And so there have been flyers all around the schools saying it's coming. Be here for the big announcement. They have no idea what it's going to be. I'm not going to tell you either because no spoiler alerts, but we are going to announce our big surprise to them in our respective houses. So hopefully, Team Sirius, that's my team, will be getting the big surprise that will be coming. We have Ms. Ryanberg and Rigel, you know, they're wearing the green tomorrow, but we're all...you should not show them your pants. So we are all coming in our team colors and dressing as aliens and NASA people for our Raid 501 tomorrow. So it should be really interesting. But I do want to thank you guys. You know, as I was looking for a principalship, I was very particular in places that I was applying. I needed a place that did Eureka math. I needed a place that really looked into Kagan and believed in Ron Clark and every piece fit together. And so I feel like fate fell in here, I hope, and I know that some of my staff has really felt the same way. So thank you for this opportunity.
So I have one statement or question mainly to the counselor because on the board, I go back as long as you do. And I visited a coach or I visited State Street, I think it was a coach that I visited, but and it was about five or six years ago. And she told me that some of the very experienced teachers were having kids act out and they were...they'd never had this happen and they were getting burnt out. It was the middle of the year. So it sounds like that you may have this under control. So would you expound on that?
Yeah. I don't know if you can necessarily say it's all under control.
It's under control.
I mean, it's under control. No. Honestly, I feel like every year that I get there, there's always a new set of challenges that arise. And even those teachers that have been in there for a long time, I think that, you know, a lot of our kids have gone through recent traumas and they've gone through a lot in their life. So we are constantly learning new ways to interact with the students. I would say that the changes that we are making are positive because, you know, the idea of having a team being able to assemble to a certain grade level is really important because we're having the same people responding to the same kids. So that's consistency for them to know how to de-escalate. And then also, they know, okay, I know that Ms. Ryanberg's coming. I know what to talk to her about. I feel comfortable talking to her about this. And then hopefully, we can prevent those crises from happening down the road. So I'm hoping that we're on the way to success in that sense, but I do foresee, you know, there's always going to be those challenges. But I do think that we have a great system in place with State Street. We have so many mental health resources. We have MHI P at our school. We work with Family Service and Guidance Center. I mean, we just have so much at our fingertips and that has helped our students so much. And it's been very helpful for our families, too. So hopefully, we're on that track.
Well, and just to say that we saw this and our priorities were to give you all more help.
Yes.
And that sounds like that it's going that way. And we're very pleased with the extra money that we had. And just so everybody knows, this is mental health. This is money that we've put in for mental health and we are seeing success with that.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
So any other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys, very much. Good luck to you.
Quick plug real fast. We are the performing arts school. We are doing the Addams Family that will be on December 4th. So if you would like to come see that, I highly encourage that.
Please send us an email.
Oh, for sure. Yep, I will send you an email and you're more than welcome to stop by State Street at any point.
And Dr. Sawyer, are you a theater person?
Oh, and that was another reason that this was the perfect opportunity. Yes.
I'm sure you can probably tell me.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So you're a theater person. Do you ever do any kind of like community theater or...
He can sing.
Dr. Sawyer, some of our folks need you to speak directly in the microphone.
No, not recently. It was more high school, but yes, Ms. Ryanberg is right. Any opportunity where I have a chance to breathe, I'm always singing down the hallways. So if you come, I'll send you a ditty.
I think he met with the ballet today and they asked him to be in the production with them. With that, just absolutely great energy. On the heels of the calendar, one of the adjustments that we've made is that on your calendar, we now have the upcoming two weeks listed for you as a new item starting this evening. And so Ms. Hall just has all of the things that are on the district calendar listed for the next two weeks. And then you'll get that every board meeting. So when you look at your own web email, if you click on the calendar, then you'll see all those activities listed on your actual calendar. Therefore, sending you a weekly update of events, we thought might be a bit over the top and it just takes a lot of time to get that piece out. So if it pleases the board, Ms. Hall pulling all of those activities and getting with Ms. Lister and getting that on your calendar that Ms. Lister is giving you anyway will ensure that it's under your Google Calendar. So does that sound satisfactory for the board? All right. We thank you, Ms. Hall, for pulling that with Ms. Lister and Ms. Norak together. And so from now on, every two weeks, she'll have that, but you can see it electronically yourself at any time you'd like. And some of those activities may not be things you have an interest in, but they're things that schools chose to put on the district calendar, therefore, they're on your calendar. Okay?
So the one thing, sometimes board members aren't here, like...
Like Reverend Williams right now?
Reverend Williams.
It's on your Google Calendar now. So if you go to your email, your district email, and you click on calendar, now it'll always be electronically available at any point. So you won't need an email, you won't need a piece of paper. The idea was that it would always be on the district calendar that Ms. Lister maintains for you.
You might let Dr. Mickelson know that, maybe in a personal email, that the calendar, that's a change. Okay?
Okay. So with that, so you will definitely see the December event as they add it to their calendar and we do those continued bi-weekly updates. So as we talk about online enrollment, remember our projection was to drop by 200 students was the projection and that Kansas overall has been and will continue dropping in that large amount. So Mr. Kip will come forward and begin to talk about online enrollment with tomorrow being count day.
It's count day tomorrow?
Count.
Okay. Yeah. So Mr. Gallen went ahead and put in the total chart where we're at right now. We are, as of noon today, we are at 13,488. Now, nine months ago, I did project 13,401. So that was about a 200 kid drop, as Dr. Anderson mentioned. We've mitigated that to about 113 student drop instead of that 200. So we've closed the gap somewhat. There's obviously some issues if kids don't show up the 20th. They do have...then that becomes two count days, one day before the 20th and one day after the 20th before October 4th. So generally, we do have about 500 kids absent every count day for whatever reason, illness, things like that. So generally, those kids do come back before the 4th, so we were able to recoup them. But kind of breaking it down, again, consistently, it's at the elementary school level is where we're seeing most of the drops. Middle school and high school seem to be pretty stable. In fact, some of the schools like Highland Park is a lot higher than what I projected. Same thing with Topeka West. Topeka High is just right around the stable mark. But yeah, I think that's kind of helping to offset some of the drops. You know, birth rate is declining throughout the state of Kansas. We have dropped 65 kindergarteners since last year, 23 first graders. And that's really where the kind of hole in the boat is right at primary. So that's, I don't know what we can do strategically about that. Our pre-K numbers continue to rise, so it's kind of paradoxical that these kids aren't migrating to kindergarten. So that's kind of just some broad strokes. We did have some loss, particularly at Ross and Williams, but those losses can be explained because we moved some programs from Ross and Williams over to Jardine Elementary, who is very full at this point. So with that, that's a quick broad overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to pick them.
And we'll be coming back with the after count, which is what we normally do, by race and gender. So we'll be able to give you that same report that you generally get. We've just done a little bit more this year in part because of the drop in enrollment projection. So just wanted to kind of see every week or every two weeks up to the enrollment day, kind of where do we stand? So we might get 100 students that enroll overnight. You never know. So but we'll be able to update. We have been getting students every day, actually, though.
Yes, we have. And then, yeah, to have more of a overview of race and socioeconomic status and things like that, once the dust settles after the 20th, we'll provide the board with more of those details.
Thank you, Mr. Kip.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Kip.
Thank you.
And the final item is the Equity and School Climate Report with Dr. New. Every year around this time, she gives just an overview. At the end of the year, she'll talk a little bit about how the year ended. As we kick off the year, she'll be sharing a little bit about what to look forward to and just some reminder of highlights from last year.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and good evening, board members. And it's just really an honor to serve as part of the Equity Council and now as a co-chair with Dr. Anderson. I've really observed renewed focus and commitment and growth in the Equity Council over the past few years. And our Topeka Public Schools vision really outlines what I would call the overarching goal of our Equity Council, our focus, because we have been able to cultivate partnerships with staff, families, business and industry and the greater community. And our goal is definitely always to develop students' educational, physical and social, emotional wellbeing. So I feel that as a council, we're closely aligned with the goals of Topeka Public Schools. The focus of our ongoing initiatives has been on placing students first, as we know as part of our vision and our mission. And those initiatives are, first of all, how do we engage the student voice as emerging leaders in discussions about equity in all Topeka Public Schools? And then how do we increase the evident participation of parents, guardians and other supportive adults in the education of our students? And then how do we support the development of our site-based equity teams in each school, in Topeka Public Schools? So as we've grown, we've seen that our Equity Council has evolved to become a very viable organization within our district. And in each meeting, we're able to bring together the strengths and the interests of our staff members and our administrators and the Topeka community at large. So over this past year, we have been able to forge partnerships with the Juvenile Justice Committee community, the Brown V Board Historic Site, Washburn University, as well as educators across the state and in the Midwest region. And we were very honored to receive the Magno Award, especially given the work that we've accomplished since 2016. In this slide, there's highlights of many of the things that the Equity Council was able to do during 2018 and 2019. Our Equity Council meeting follows the District New Principal Academy meeting. So many of those principals are able to stay to attend the Equity Council meeting. And there are also many principals within our district who are part of our Equity Council. At our meeting last week, we had 40 people in attendance and everybody who is part of the Equity Council that we invite every month was not present. So that was just an overwhelming number of individuals showing their commitment to our council. We would like to see greater community participation and representation in our future meetings. Six of our Equity Council members attended the Midwestern Plains Equity Assistance Center Equalearn Training at the University of Kansas that was held on February 28th. And we're in the process of continuing our work with them and scheduling their visits to Topeka for 2019, 2020. On November 13, Equity Council members and other staff members of Topeka Public Schools were invited to participate in a symposium hosted by the Kaufman Center. It was a presentation by our own superintendent, Dr. Anderson, and it was entitled Transforming Schools for Excellence and Culturally Responsive Teaching. And it was wonderful to see not only Topeka people there and people from Lawrence or Kansas City, but people from all over the Midwest region were present. In February, on February 28th, we had a historic meeting and it highlighted visits by Mrs. Catherine Carper Sawyer. She was one of the original complainants in the original Brown V Board case and she was the only child at age 10 to testify before the Supreme Court. We also had Ms. Mary Davis appear via Skype. She was 104 at the time and as many of you know, as Mr. Williams' mother, Reverend Williams' mother-in-law, she transitioned on Sunday, September the 8th. But this past August, Ms. Carper Sawyer received the National Distinguished Service Award from the 400 Years of African-American History Commission in Virginia during the ceremonies where they marked the 400 years when the first slaves had arrived on the shores of the United States. As a follow-up, a brief file, Ms. Carper Sawyer, will be recorded in the Congressional Record. Also, on November the 29th, we had a panel visit from Mr. and Mrs. Dunston. They are parents of incarcerated young man who was a Topeka Public Schools student. And Chief Ron Brown also spoke on the Juvenile Justice Bill. Then we made our holiday visit to the Shawnee County Juvenile Detention Center on December 20th, and we're excited that we will be returning there this year in the month of November to bring holiday treats to the young people who are students of Topeka Public Schools and some who are not, just to let them know that we value their voice and we want them to know we support them. Then we were honored to have Tiagene Ray, a college prep student, attend our meeting on March the 28th. And she shared her reflections on culturally relevant reading materials. And at that same meeting, the Williams Elementary staff shared their work with culturally responsive research. In April, on the 25th, many of our council members attended the lecture at Washburn University by Tom Ahesey Coats, the author of Between the World and Me. And then during the week of May, the 13th through the 18th, many of our council members participated in the 65th Annual Celebration of the Brown V Board Signing. So as we move forward, we are very excited about this current year and what we are doing with the Equity Council. We want to incorporate special events and book talks and field trips into what we do so that our members have exposure to our greater community and not only look at what we can do within our school district, but what we can do for Topeka as a whole. Our meetings for this first semester will be on the second Thursday of each month and then we will go back to our typical schedule of the fourth Thursday of the month during the second semester. And that was in order to help us avoid holiday and school calendar conflicts. So as we move forward, on September the 30th, Dr. Ibram Kendi, the author of How to Be an Anti-Racist, will be at Washburn University at White Concert Hall, free to the public. And we were given free books at our last meeting by Superintendent Ekon, Inami Ekon. And so we will probably follow up with a book talk related to that book. On October the 1st, this is one of our field trips, Debbie Irving, who is the author of Waking Up White, will be at the Church of the Resurrection in Lee Wood, Kansas. And our own Dr. Anderson will be co-facilitating that session. And many of our Topeka Public Schools staff and Equity Council members... And many of our Topeka Public Schools staff and Equity Council members have registered to attend that. And then, as we said earlier, on November 14, the Equity Council will hold their meeting at the Shawnee County Juvenile Detention Center, will share holiday treats and engage with our youth. And this will be one of the special events we will do in addition to the activities that are on the slide. So that's kind of a brief, hopefully, update on what we're doing as an Equity Council. And if you have any questions, I'd be very happy to do my best to answer them.
Questions? Ms. Kirk.
Well, I just want to congratulate you and the co-leaders and the people who've been working so hard with the Equity Council over the last few years to get it going. We had trouble getting it started and making it really flourish, and we knew it would be helpful and important. So I'm so pleased to hear all that you are doing now has turned into a really a viable organization that will, I think, serve us well. So thank you and thank all your folks. I know Dr. Anderson and you, but there are others who have been very much involved in making this work. So thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
And I too would like to thank you and Dr. Anderson for your leadership as we went to this next layer over the last two years. And what I've always appreciated about when we first started this work is this whole idea of multiple perspectives, understanding that, yes, we hear from an educational perspective, but the fact that you take us out into the community, to JDC, and you talk about how race is intersectional with poverty and lack of opportunity, it kind of just makes it part of who we are as educators, who we are as community people. And so as we go to administer in different ways, because as we get off the board, it doesn't mean we stop serving this community. So we want to know the people in the community, and we want to have those connections. I appreciate how both of you have facilitated that. The one thing I would like to hear more of is our student voice. I mean, how do we hear that? And I appreciate, too, that it's not all done in the Equity Council, that we sometimes go out, but if that means us going out and hearing what the... I know that THS at one point had a youth equity team, just hearing their voice and seeing what they're saying about these concerns or what they're saying is going well around these kinds of issues and how we're addressing them at Topeka Public Schools.
You know, one of the items that we have in place is a student Equity Council, which so I have a student superintendent advisory group, and it's a diverse group of students with a variety of perspectives. So today's meeting was at Topeka High, and Topeka High students met. Topeka West has a group that, and it's really no administrators in the room, it's really myself and just the students, unless they bring up a topic that needs to be discussed with the administrators, which often there are people that we bring in that need to listen to what they're sharing. And so this year, and then we have Highland Park as well, which was the first one that we established. And we talk about pretty much everything that students want to run up in that space. I invite you to consider coming to one of those meetings. But each student, each quarter, I wanted to ask the board's permission if a student could be part of the board in some fashion, meaning that under Superintendent's presentation, they thought perhaps a student superintendent advisory presentation might be appropriate. They're quite interested in the DCAC cellphone conversation coming down. And there are other topics they would like... Suicide prevention was another topic that some students feel strongly about that they want to talk to the board about. So they will be prepared to present to the board, one student per quarter over the three student group that we're talking about. So it's at the comprehensive schools, and we may very well expand that beyond that. But those are considered equity, student Equity Councils. Now, last year, I know Ross started his student Equity Council, and several of the other schools have theirs operating, but for the high school, it's been facilitated through that superintendent advisory. Each one of those members as well served, have someone that serves on the Mayor Commission and some of the other leadership activities in the community to be a voice of equity in those other venues.
And I would agree, this is the perfect time to really tap into the thoughts, the voice and the leadership desires of our young people. Before the board meeting tonight, I went to Youth Board, and it was just amazing to observe how they were so intent on the roles that they play. And they are Topeka Public Schools and then a few from other school districts as well, but they are our students. So I think that this is the perfect time to really allow them their place.
So, Dr. New, I'm interested in two things. Number one, the curriculum, which Dr. Anderson and I heard about over, I think, last year...
Yeah, culturally responsible curriculum. And how that is being integrated into the school system. I mean, do you have a comment about that? I mean, is it everywhere or is it just a few schools now?
Well, I know this summer, Dr. Anderson was able to arrange to have Saretta Hammond come and train many of our staff for a couple of days, and I think that really made an impact. I know pockets of buildings and individuals had chosen to do her book study. Williams was one example. But I'm sure Dr. Anderson can add more about how her visit has impacted District.
And I invite, and Ms. Wallace wants to add to this, but we sent staff first to UNKC as a university partner, who also is focused very much on research around culturally responsive teaching, but really culturally responsive teaching and the neuroscience of the brain, you know, how the brain develops and what culture looks like and how your experiences really shape how you come into school ready to learn. And so we've spent a lot of time on that. We've partnered with Washburn, and so we sent teachers to the Washburn University Culture Responsive Institute over the summer that they had, in which teachers stayed on campus and were in that space. So we really are accessing every opportunity available to us in that regard and then incorporating it in the classroom in different ways.
And that was the piece of the puzzle for me that needed to be done. I mean, it just seemed like, yeah, we know about bias, we know about everything, but how do we get this to the kids? This is a good piece of the puzzle. The other thing is, the Equity Council is doing wonderful work. Would you comment about work on bias for sexual orientation?
So this last week, we introduced this exercise in implicit bias, and it is the Harvard study on that. And I think once you begin to examine yourself and your biases and think about how you look at others and why you view them in that way, it really helps you eliminate or beginning yourself to eliminate a biased reflection on others who look different, think different, speak differently than you may. And I think it's hard to divide and say, you know, one bias is worse than another, but yet bias itself is separater among individuals. And so if we want to come together and have a common purpose, then we have to really look individually and examine ourselves and why we might exclude others. So I don't know that there is a specific curriculum that would address that, but I assume that there probably is, and I think if individuals start on that path, they will encounter different resources to help them do that self-examination.
So I would encourage the Equity Council to look into that. You know, we know about teenage suicide and kids that are LGBTQ and their tendency to have, you know, to kill themselves. So, you know, we need to bring that out in the open and tell all those kids that they're accepted the way they are, basically.
Ms. Johnson.
I just wanted to make a note that, I mean, I definitely hear your point. When the Equity Council was first created, part of the bylaws was that they would focus on race. And the reason why is because no matter what, whether LGBT, whether you're not, whether you're tall, whether you're short, you all have, we all have skin on. And that's been a basis for a lot of bias down through the years, even as we talked about the history here. So that particular council was made to specifically focus on that, also because the data that we have, we always break it down into race. So if we don't ever address this issue of race, how do we ever get to the things that help close that gap regardless of what the other factors are? But I mean, the concept definitely can be used for any group, you know, there could be other Equity Councils, but the bylaws of that one do specifically talk about race.
Like, how is it...
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. New.
Thank you.
Moving on, we do have the one action item, which never made it to my action item line. So if I saw a place I can refresh? Do I hear a motion to accept this resolution?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the resolution. We approve the board resolution, Act 1905, on the sale of general application of the non-merited bond series 2019.
Do you have a motion and second? Is there any discussion? We're ready to vote? We are now ready for board member comments. Ms. Johnson.
Very busy week or two. I'll be with the breakfast and the Teacher of the Year, and I do want to thank you all for the changes regarding the calendar, because I think I missed your best from the very first time, or not your best, fitness, fun night. That's my workout for that day, y'all. So I've appreciated just being able to have it all condensed in one place. I do appreciate that.
Ms. Wallace.
Well, I'm going to make up for them. I have two items. One is, you know, we've been hearing all this talk about, the national press about the issue of vaping, and our School Board Association put out a, in their monthly thing, whatever it's called, a whole issue, article about vaping, but they put together the process of the things that need to be in place. And we have the first thing in place. We've had a policy prohibiting any kind of electronic cigarette. The way it's written, it's been there for a while. What we don't have in place is a systemic program to make sure that parents and students and all the people who are facing these issues have some information coming from us. So there's a whole program put together there for us to use, so I've shared it with, you know, what, I can't, Mrs. Wallace? And I'm sure that they'll be taking that under consideration of things that we can do internally to make sure our kids are safe and are behaving in safe ways. The other thing is an issue I brought up, I think, at our last meeting, and I was questioned, you know, had some concern about, and we had a brief discussion about. And that was that the city was giving some discussion about another TIF to take care of, have to be given to downtown area. And of course, again, like they did, they failed to interview, to talk to us when they did the one on 29th and Fairlon. And so I really felt like we needed to say something to them to consider that they're not the only ones who were affected by those kinds of decisions. And so I asked whether or not we might, as a district, give a presentation there. I mean, we're not opposed to any kind of advancement, but what people sometimes forget is that Topeka Public Schools is not, our boundaries are not as big as the city boundaries. And so we don't have a whole lot of big-ticket item places that we can reap from their property taxes. We have Racers out there, we have everything that's downtown. We do not have the mall, we do not have Goodyear. I'm trying to think, I already think of that, all the stuff out in the south, off of South Topeka Boulevard, that is not in this district. All of those things are missing from this, are not a part of our property tax base. So we have a very narrow property tax base, and so when they are looking at the whole city, you know, they're thinking, well, we'll get it back in sales tax. Well, we don't get it back in sales tax. And I just think that we need to make them aware of the impact on Topeka Public Schools when they plan a TIF. And I guess we're not opposed to progress because our parents and citizens benefit from that, but there needs to be some recognition of the impact on us. So I'm hoping, this is what I'm hoping the board will consider, is that we have a staff person present the facts that are beyond our pedigree, and then we show up in support, that we are there with them to tell, let them know that this is an entire board concern on behalf of our patrons and particularly our children. A 20-year TIF, do you realize how many thousands of children that really will affect in terms of loss, bond, I mean, property tax revenue that would come to us? These are 20, we're talking 20 years. And we have, what, 13,000 students right now? So 20 years, you just multiply that times 20, so I was doing probably quite that high. But that's the number of children whose education is affected by those kinds of decisions. So I think it's important that we impress our city fathers and mothers up there of the impact of TIFs on others than just themselves. So I can't do this on my own, so I'm looking at my colleagues to see whether or not they meet again, I believe, is it the 15th of October?
I think that was the date.
That was the date I had in my mind. I'm hoping that's the same day. We can check with our own personal city council people to make sure that we are correct. But it would seem to me that it would behoove us to be there to support whichever staff person has to go and provide all the real information about the actual dollars and the amount of people and what we've lost over the years in terms of property tax revenue. And our property tax assess valuation, and I'm just looking at the figures that were given to us tonight, because I was going to get something else, and our assess valuation in the past 10 years has only increased by 0.34%. Did that tell you something? So, I mean, the last three years, it's been 1.96, so the last three years have looked pretty good, but over a longer haul, it does not look real great. So I just think we need to make sure that we share that kind of information.
So if you can attend that meeting, that would be great. I'll be out of town, but...
I mean, we need a consensus. October 15, that we need to be there to support whatever, whoever decides to do that. Maybe we don't want us to do this and just to let it go. I'm just, I don't know. I don't...
Good time, maybe not.
And I don't know when this issue is coming up. We'd have to go look. No, the 15th is after that. Yeah, that's finished by noon, or they're a little after that, yeah. It'll just be that, it'll be that evening.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's important, at the very least, probably all of us should reach out to our individual city council members, so they understand. We are, as you just very eloquently articulated, we are not opposed to development. We want to, we want growth in our district. But I do think that they ought to take into consideration that for those of us who property tax may be the only tax that we love, you know, we don't have a sales tax like that. know, we don't have a sales tax like them or any of the other special revenue streams. And we also have a constitutionally required service that we deliver, but there should be some consideration given to that before signing off on a new TIF after new TIF after new TIF. By the way, TIFs are supposed to be temporary, actually, by definition, that's supposed to be the way it works, but it seems like the same area that was included in the last TIF 20 years ago will be the area that's included in this one, and it'll maybe just get bigger and then just get bigger, and I wonder when is the actual payoff going to show up that you're supposed to be speaking about. My thoughts, I think it's a good idea and certainly recommend you read it out.
And I think, Mr. Robbins, somebody will attend from the district to express our feelings.
Would be helpful just to send out a reminder to the board members that we're going to be there on the 15th, at whatever time it is, we will be there. Okay.
You finished?
I am.
Okay. Last thing, I attended the ICC meeting, and I've given you all handouts. Dusty Nichols from Shawnee County Emergency Management Department came in and talked about active shooter response. He also, this piece of paper with the listing of hazards and probability and magnitude and duration, and then how to respond to an active shooter situation. You know, we all need to know this, because we are in the schools, and that unfortunately could happen. We hope not, but... So anyway, I brought that all to your attention, and you have a handout, so. And that's all I have. So I have a motion. Ms. Kirk?
Just to add to that, you know, one of the things I hear periodically is that when we have a building lockdown, that there are people who are itinerant to the, within the district, whether they're music people or speech people or whomever, they go from building to building, and they don't ever get that notice. And they have no idea until they get there that the building's in lockdown, and with the craze, they could be walking right into whatever's happening. So I don't know how we do it. I don't know how you figure out who all those people are, because I don't know who they all are, but somehow we need to figure out a way to let those folks know when a building, particularly when it's in the neighborhood and they're driving through the neighborhood to get there. They don't know it until they get there, they'll sort of see the police presence, they may be going in the other way, they don't see it until they get right up to it. So I just don't know how we handle it, but somehow we got to think, I don't know how we handle it with ours system, but that's something to think about.
It seems like maybe like the Megan Alert that hits all cell phones, especially if it's an active shooter.
That's how, maybe that creates housing safety and you ground what we are doing.
Okay, so I'm certainly going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, so...
Second, anybody opposed? We are adjourned.